All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call the Tuesday, April nineteen, two thousand and twenty-two town, 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 a quarter meter, town of Cordero, there are town council regular meeting to order. And just one thing to note before we go into roll call, this is our first meeting and we're using a hybrid model. So we have people in person actually in the chamber, chamber council room, sorry. A little bit nervous with the in-person stuff. And then you, people also have the ability to zoom in to view the meeting and also to chime in during public comment and the, and the, under any of our items. So with that, Rebecca, can we get a roll call, please?
Thank you, Mary Cassisa, Councilmember Beckman.
Here.
Councilmember Mongan.
Here.
Councilmember Ravazia.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lee.
Here.
And Mary Cassisa.
Here. If we could stand salute the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
So at this time, I like to go ahead and open the meeting up for public comment. This gives anybody from a public opportunity to speak for three minutes on any topic that is not on the agenda. There's basically three ways you can do this, you can either raise your hand, I will allow participants over if you're zooming in. If you're in person, please use the podium with the microphone over there. And the third way is if we got any emails in. So at this moment, I don't see anybody in person that's wishing to speak under public comment. And I don't see any of the attendees raising their hands. And Rebecca, did we get any emails in?
Thank you, Mary Cassisa. Yes, we did receive one emailed public comment. Which I believe has already been uploaded to the website for public view. And should be available to the council and the public to review on the agenda and I will read it. Once I start my timer, sorry, learning how to juggle multiple hats. Are we seeing the timer? No, we're not. Okay. Okay, thank you, I guess we'll have to go low tech at the moment. But this isn't, this won't be longer than three minutes, I can tell. It is from Helya Owens on Meadow Suite who says, to whom it may concern, thank you for your time. I am writing to express my concerns that the six hundred block of Meadow Suite Drive will be zoned for high density, single home buildings. The increase in the number of houses along Meadow Suite will greatly increase high speed traffic that is already a concern for this neighborhood. To state that Meadow Suite is a corridor greatly exaggerates the reality, but Meadow Suite is a residential street, not a corridor. In addition, with the closing of the exit in front of Bank of America, there is already an increase in traffic exiting Meadow Suite. This includes very large trucks that can hardly navigate the exit. No allowances were made for the commercial traffic that was diverted from the dealerships down the road. Tamil Pious Drive can be considered a corridor and can very easily handle the extra traffic. Meadow Suite will also be impacted by the additional residences and can't handle the additional traffic. It's already an unsafe road due to the high speed exits from Tamil Pious. The parcel is very small, building high density housing on such a small, small space will have a detrimental impact on safety, aesthetics, view and property values in our neighborhood. Sincerely yours, Helya Owens.
That's the only one received by email?
I believe that is the only one, but I, soon as I close this, I will double check the public comment email. That was the only email public comment received and I do not believe I am seeing any raised hands in Zoom.
Okay, thank you. With that, I will go ahead and close public comment and we'll go ahead and proceed to presentations. We have two presentations tonight. The first one is the Central Marine Police Authority Annual Statistics Report to the Council. Initially, it's going to be provided by Chief Michael Norton. And Chief Norton, if I have this correct, you have served law enforcement, I believe, for twenty-one years. And you've been chief since two thousand and seventeen, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, it's been a little over five years now. Thank you, Mary Cassisa, member of the council for having us. Congrats on your first hybrid meeting tonight and it seems like it's going actually really smooth, so that's great. So I am Chief Mike Norton, I am the chief for Cordero Madera. Generally, I do give this report, and I think I've done it the last five or six years. However, this year I delegated the project to my second-in-command Captain Hamid Khalili. I'm not sure he's ever spoken before you, but he's been, we started around the same time, so he's been an officer with us for over twenty years like myself and he did all the heavy lifting, so I'm gonna go ahead and let him do the presentation as well. And we'll both be available to answer any questions during and after the presentation. So with that, I'll turn it over to the very capable hands of Captain Khalili.
Thanks.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, member of the council. I appreciate the opportunity for us to be able to present our annual report to you. Let me share my screen, bear with me, which, one second. Okay, can you, can everyone see that? Okay, perfect. Before I dive into the, to the report, there's two things I'd like to just bring your attention to. The first is, is the obvious, and that's the pandemic. Starting in two thousand and twenty and going into two thousand and twenty-one, the status of the pandemic had a direct correlation with our calls for service, our, our proactivity levels. And then the second is the ongoing staffing challenges that we continue to face, not just Central Marine, but just law enforcement in general. So with that, this first slide you see here is, is an analysis of the calls for service that we experienced in the entire calendar year of two thousand and twenty-one. Central Marine Police responded to thirty-four thousand and nineteen calls for service, which roughly comes out to ninety-three calls per day. That is an increase from the previous year where we had about eighty-nine calls for service. And then in the lower right-hand side, you'll see calls per month. And that's, you know, it's direct correlation with the pandemic again. The pie chart here, the distribution of calls for service remained fairly even, I think Larkspur went down one percent and San and Sommo went up one percent, but Cordero Madera remained the same. And no surprises here, we see that the calls for service are directly related to retail shopping centers. And we get a high volume of calls for service, anything from thefts to medical aids to traffic stops. But over here, you see that the Village Town Center and so on generate the highest volume of calls for service for Central Marine Police. And then below that, it's the top ten calls for service that we respond to, and obviously the, the first one being traffic stops. As with most jurisdictions, traffic safety seems to be the number one community concern and where we allocate a lot of our resources and attention to. Followed by wireless no duress, and that's basically nine-one-one hangups. We get a lot of those because we have a lot of cell towers. This is a breakdown of the calls for service for Cordero Madera, as you can see of that thirty-nine thousand and change, eighty-seven hundred of them are for Cordero Madera, and that's a five percent increase from the last year. And again, traffic stops are the number one, as with the other jurisdictions. We respond and assist the fire department with a lot of medical aids. And then nine-one-one hangups. And oddly enough, our calls for service seems to peak on Tuesdays, for some reason. Shifting gears a little bit into traffic stops, we made four thousand nine hundred and seventy-six traffic stops jurisdiction-wide. And as you could see in the red print there, that's a sixty-seven percent increase from two thousand and twenty. Again, two thousand and twenty being the first year of the pandemic, there was a lot of uncertainties and a lot of concerns. On staff's part, the officers were reluctant, they were scared, they didn't know, you know, the, the virus being airborne and how close contact worked. And we also saw a significant decrease in the volume of traffic on, on our surface streets. But with that, this is a breakdown of the highest traffic stop locations. And believe it or not, there's a method to the madness here. We do focus on Larkspur with our Redwood High School and Magnolia and Dougherty Corridor, we have three schools in that little area. So student safety is paramount for us. But then you could see at the bottom, the Village and the surrounding areas of the Village do generate a lot of traffic stops. Again, this is kind of repetitive, but this breaks it down a little bit more granular. Cordero Madera sees a twenty-five percent share of the traffic stops and it's a little less than Larkspur and San and Sommo. And that's something that we identified when we were generating this report and will be addressing with our staff to have it be a little bit more equitable amongst the, the cities and towns. Obviously, for the times, you see that from seven o'clock in the morning till about four, five o'clock in the evening is when we generate the most amount of traffic stops. Obviously, that's because there's more vehicles on the road. Again, a little, little repetitive here, but the Village at Cordero Madera does generate the most, and that's not just at the Village, but the surrounding surface streets, followed by the Town Center, Macy's, and then Madera del Presidio at Paradise. So we do focus our traffic enforcement in areas where, number one, we see a higher-than-normal volume of traffic collisions and then followed by citizen complaints. Shifting gears a little bit, we're focusing now on reports. In two thousand and twenty-one, we took a total of two thousand six hundred and forty-five police reports. That's physical reports that the officers have to sit down and write. That could be anything from a miscellaneous fall on city property report to a criminal investigation that goes up to the DA's office for criminal prosecution. Pretty equitable amongst the three, no, no real surprises there. And then times, obviously, when, when people are at work, seems to generate the most amount of reports for us. And the reports taken by month, again, we saw early in two thousand and twenty-one and it just increased thereafter. And again, that kind of mirrors the, the pandemic status. No real surprise here, reports, the shopping centers generate a lot of reports for us. And that is jurisdiction-wide. This is a breakdown, so we are required by law to report crime reporting to the FBI on an annual basis, and I'm gonna touch on that at the very end here. But the way we've been doing up until this point is called the UCR Uniform Crime Reporting. And what we did was we broke it down by jurisdiction over the last two years. And so you can see for Cordero Madera, knock on wood, we had no homicides and we tend to keep it that way. There was a fifty percent increase from two to three in rapes. But I want to bring your attention down below to larceny and thefts. There is a, there is an increase in that. Part of that is attributed to, I don't know if council recalls, but about, about a year ago or a little less, we started seeing a lot of organized retail thefts throughout the Bay Area and actually throughout the state. And with Cordero Madera being a retail hub in the county, it, it's, it's a target for that and we experienced a lot of that. So that's why you see an increase there, but I am happy to report that we have seen it taper off a little bit. So we haven't seen quite the volume that we did in early to mid-two thousand and twenty-one. Again, this is a continuation of the last slide, but drug offenses, you see those kind of tapered down with the way legislation has been and the lack of prosecution. That's why you see, that's why you see those numbers go down a little bit. The one interesting thing of note here is crimes against police. That, that increased all around and we see more and more people becoming resistive and combative against us and causing injury to the officers. Shoplifting. It went from forty to eighty-nine, and that was what I was mentioning earlier with the, the increase in retail organized thefts. That did become a new category in the penal code, it is now a felony. And so that kind of skewed our, our stats a little bit, because the prior year, that was not a standalone crime. Financial loss. You'll see robberies went up drastically. I can tell you that is attributed to one specific case of an organized retail theft that occurred in Larkspur where there was approximately a little over a quarter of a million dollars stolen at a, at a high-end, at a high-end store at the Marine Country Mart. So that's why that increased so much. Residential burglaries went down just a little bit. Theft and larcenies went down and then motor vehicle theft stayed fairly the same. This is specific to Cordero Madera again, you see of the eight hundred and fifty-eight reports that we took, this is the top five categories. Incident reports, again, incident reports could be anything from a fall on city property to just report for documentation purposes, followed by grand thefts, auto burglaries, we're at thirty-four. Shifting gears a little bit, when I talk about enforcement, whether that's traffic or parking, this is a breakdown of, of what that looks like. We did issue a significant amount more than the previous year, again, pandemic-related. One thousand nine hundred and thirteen moving citations, the previous year was at one thousand four hundred and forty-seven. And parking citations went up from one thousand eight hundred and thirty-six to three hundred, three thousand five hundred and ninety-two, and then a breakdown by month. And I'm sorry if I'm boring you with all these statistics, I know it can get monotonous here, so I'll go through it. Shifting gears again, traffic collisions. This is one of the major factors that we consider when we look at where we're gonna allocate our resources for traffic enforcement. There was a seventeen percent increase in traffic collisions. Again, that is pandemic-related, more people going back to work, the roadways are getting more congested. And we really haven't seen any improvement in driving behaviors by the, the motoring public. And we saw about ten collisions per week, which is an increase from eight the prior year. Again, no real surprise here, most of our traffic collisions are occurring in and around our heavily traveled roadways, meaning the shopping centers. Cordero Madera Town Center, for whatever reason, had the highest amount. This could be traffic collisions that occur on Madera, on Tamil Pious, or inside of the actual shopping centers. And believe it or not, we see a lot of collisions, people backing up into each other. And this is a breakdown of the locations within Cordero Madera where we see the most. And again, Town Center in the Village, followed by Pfeiffer, Tamil Pious, Paradise. And so when we look at this, we kind of keep track of the locations, we get a monthly printout. And our traffic supervisor maintains all the citizen complaints and that's how we allocate our resources. We put out weekly traffic hotspots, those are the areas that we would like our officers to pay special attention to. And again, that could be, you know, significant crashes or a higher-than-normal volume of citizen complaints. And then last but not least, the threshold analysis, this breaks down two thousand and twenty compared to two thousand and twenty-one. You'll see that calls for service stayed fairly flat, traffic stops increased significantly, and I hope that that will be an upward trend next year as well. I think we're all at the mercy of the pandemic and unfortunately, the signs are not going in the right direction. Reports, we saw an increase, again, pandemic-related, I think. But with that, the last thing I want to bring council's attention to is this report that you saw here was based on our UCR reporting. And starting in March of this year, we were under federal mandate to transition to what's called a California Incident-Based Reporting System. It is a complete one-eighty to how we have been doing things. And so I just want to prepare the council for next year. I don't think the chief and I have fully wrapped our heads around what the trends are gonna look like. And speaking to other agencies who've been reporting that way, they have seen a significant increase in the number of calls. That's just because of the way it's tabulated. So I think next year will be, will be very different and we might have to adapt our presentation to, to better suit that reporting process. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions council has.
Thanks, a great report, by the way, lots of dating, it was well-presented, so appreciate that. Are there any questions from any council members? Yeah, Eli, go ahead.
Thank you, Fred, thank you, Captain, great report, as always, just a few questions for you guys. I'm gonna ask, first of all, what do you guys do when you get a nine-one-one hangup? Is there anything that can be done or is that just kind of, you know, it is what it is?
No, so there's, there's two types. The first one would be a landline, so it's a, it's a landline telephone from a business or from a residence. And so when that nine-one-one call comes through into the dispatch center, the specific address is provided. And dispatch will typically make efforts to call the, the person back and just verify whether it was a mistake or an accidental call or not. And if they're not able to verify that, then officer gets dispatched and physically goes out to the location to verify that there is no emergency. The other type that we see frequently is those wireless duress calls and those who would be nine-one-one hangups via cell. The problem with the cells are, it doesn't give us a specific address, it gives us the nearest cell tower location. And so, you know, in, in one of the slides, you'll see that, you know, on Via Casitas in Greenbray, there's like seven hundred wireless duress calls. And that's because the, the wireless tower is in that location. With those, depending on if you hear any commotion in the background or any signs of duress, then we will absolutely respond and check the area, but we're kind of responding to the general area. But if it's a simple hangup, we'll, we'll take that for beat information, if, if that answers your question, sir.
Yeah, definitely, thank you. My second question, I think actually the slide that you've got up maybe answered this, I was just gonna ask, obviously, huge increase in traffic stops, or I guess really traffic everything between two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty-one. And I was gonna ask, is that mainly just because two thousand and twenty was so unique with regards to the virus? And, and you know, more to the point, is two thousand and twenty-one kind of more quote-unquote "normal" in terms of these numbers?
Yes, the short answer is yes, two thousand and twenty, there was a lot of uncertainty and I'll be honest with you, staff was, was a little apprehensive, because we didn't know. We didn't know how easily the virus was transmissible, we didn't know the, the social distancing. You know, I think it wasn't until the middle of two thousand and twenty or towards the end of two thousand and twenty when CDC came out with guidance on the types of masks that help prevent the, the virus. Two thousand and twenty-one is, for lack of a better term, more normal. But as compared to, I would say, two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, it is still a little bit lower. And that's why I'm hoping if, if all goes well and the pandemic does ease and we can transition back to quote-unquote "normal" life, you'll, you'll see those numbers go back up. And, you know, knock on wood, if we're able to improve our staffing levels, that number will also go up.
Great, thank you, and I think that kind of segues into the last question that I wanted to ask you, which is, is there anything that you guys would request from the councils that you serve in terms of like policies or changes to traffic infrastructure or other kinds of support?
Chief, you wanna take that one?
I'm sorry, I got a dog losing its mind, I'm working on here, could you repeat it?
Anything that we as councils can do to, to better support you guys and help kind of lower incidence of crime where we're seeing them? And I'm thinking specifically like if there's policies or if there's like, you know, really problematic intersections where we want to maybe see if we can work with Public Works and, and, you know, see if a redesign is necessary or things like that?
Yeah, so that's a good question. In terms of crime, not at this point, and we always will come directly to the manager or your department heads for assistance when needed. And often we go directly to, if we're, if it's a shopping center, for instance, we'll work directly with the shopping center to get assistance. In terms of intersections, we actually, that's a, an ongoing thing that we're, we're constantly analyzing and working with. I'll give you one small example, is right where you're temporarily located tonight, the intersection right outside in front of the gym. It's, you know, something where I reached out to your Director of Public Works and just said, hey, maybe we could tweak this light a little bit. I'm seeing, we're seeing some near misses, not necessarily collisions, but the way it was timed and the rotation of it was causing some issues. And, and RJ went out and looked at it and agreed with what we were seeing. And I think just this week, he made some changes and it seems to be helping.
Hey, well, thank you so much, Chief, and thank you, Captain, really helpful.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah, Leela, go ahead.
Thank you, and thanks, Chief and Captain Kazili, I hope I'm saying that right, thank you for your presentation. Couple of quick questions, I think you said calls for service went up because of the pandemic, but traffic stops were down and traffic stops are included in those call-for-service numbers, so I'm just wondering if you can address what, what is, what are the ones that went up? How you explain that? I think, I'm sure medical calls increased, but I just wonder if you have other color you can shed on those numbers.
As far as the calls for service go, I mean, as you can see in two thousand and twenty, it was only two thousand, or less than two thousand, lower than two thousand and twenty-one. We did see a significant uptick in the number of medical-related calls in two thousand and twenty. Again, pandemic-related, people were scared. And our calls for service also kind of mirror the fire department. So when the fire department gets dispatched to a house for a sick person in the pandemic, they ask for law enforcement assistance. So I think more people were staying home and working from home, which obviously generates less calls for service, believe it or not, than when people are at work. The traffic stops, the, the traffic stops is, it's, it's, it's officer-initiated. And, and that is the one thing that, you know, I, I can't necessarily fault the officers, because there was a lot of unknowns in early two thousand and twenty. And people were scared, people were scared of personal contact. And so when an officer has to make a traffic stop and walk up to a window, and there's a lot of unknowns of whether I'm gonna catch it or am I not? You know what, I'd rather, I'd rather not deal with exposing myself unnecessarily. There was that, and there was also just less motorists on the roadway, because more people were working from home. So the increase you see in traffic stops is related to more of a comfort factor with the officers and also a drastic increase in the traffic volume that we saw on our surface streets.
Yeah, I'll add, I'll add that two thousand and twenty, I mean, the schools were, were all remote. So just the corridor where you're temporarily located right now, there was no traffic, any time of the day, twenty-four seven, down Dougherty. Whereas everyone knows it's a massive logjam when, to and from school. And once again, there was very little traffic coming and going to San Francisco as well.
All right, thank you, and then just a quick question about the traffic stops. When you see it's at a location, like say at the Village, does that mean that the infraction occurred there or that the person, that's where they pulled over?
You know, it, it could be either. These stats are drawn from our CAD system and it really depends on where the dispatcher enters the location. Most times, the location of the violation is pretty close to where the end traffic stop is and where it gets entered in, into the CAD system. So I wish I could give you a more specific answer, but generally, yes, the infraction that's committed is close to that location.
Got you, thank you very much.
Of course.
Bob or Charles? Okay, I, I just have a couple for you. On one of the slides, I can't remember which one, it looked like Tan Ridge Apartments made, I want to say the top ten or so, I think there was twenty-five reports. You know, those reports were related to, it just seems it's concentrated again in one apartment complex.
Yes, and that's a great observation. So we had, we had some clientele there, there's two that come to mind that We had some clientele there. There's two that come to mind that generated the majority of those. And they were more medical and mental health related. So that I, I would not, um, I would not categorize a Tam Ridge as a high. Volume of, of criminal activity or reports. This is, I believe it's an anomaly related to two, um, two residents.
Okay, thanks. I actually have a couple more for you.
Please.
I have two code enforcement officers. I think they've been in around for about a year now or so. I know the reports have gone up, but have you seen any decrease in maybe on certain types of reports? One sample gives like dogs off leash that maybe they're handling those, um, where your officers aren't being called out for that, those types of items.
Yes, um, we used to handle prior to, um, to Mike and to Adam. The police handled the vast majority, if not all of those types of calls. And I, I, I call those the quality of life issues, right? The dogs off leash, the barking dogs, the leaf blower calls. Code enforcement has been a tremendous help in, in assisting with that and, and lowering the call volumes for the police officers to focus on the criminal activity and, and the traffic enforcement. So. Um, I've, I've known Mike for many, many years. I've worked with him. He's a, he's a tremendous asset and he's got a good team and, and I would say absolutely they're, uh, they're an asset to, to the town and they assist us with. Allowing us to focus on what, uh, the community is wanting and that's traffic enforcement.
It's, it's great to hear that they're being effective. Uh, just a couple more. Um, when is, are your staffing levels, are those on par? Or has it dropped down or is it just about what it's been last couple of years or so? Because it seems like that would also affect again, taking reports and, uh, traffic stops and all that stuff to a certain degree.
Yes, that's a great question, Mr. Mayor. Our, our, our staffing levels are slated for a certain amount, but you know, I would, Chief, I don't know if you. Like the last three or four years at least, we have not been able to, um. Recruit and retain police officers that want to stay here. Um, the cost of living is really, uh, is really high. And so more and more of our officers are living further and further away just to be able to afford a house. And there, there's the, the cost of living issue. There is the fact that, um, like when the chief and I got in the, in the business. Um, we were like, I, I personally competed against about a hundred and fifty other candidates for the one spot. I will tell you, Mr. Mayor, that today. We are recruiting for two to three police officer positions and we're getting maybe six candidates. And of those six candidates, we are absolutely lucky to have one. Who's qualified and that can pass a background. And that is not unique to just Central Marin. That is. I would say statewide. I mean, if, um, I, I follow a lot of different agencies and you'd be hard pressed to find an organization that is not actively recruiting. And so we're, we're, you know, we're dealing with, um, with other agencies that are paying more, that are closer to these officers' homes. And so that is, that's been a challenge that we've been fighting. Police officers, cadets, the non sworn civilian staff that we hire, the cadets, it's challenging all the way around and. To, uh, you know, to, let's not forget about the social justice movement that we've been experiencing, um, and, and the negative light on law enforcement. It's, it's not an attractive job and you know, I have many, many friends not in law enforcement that constantly come to me and they go, how do you do it? Why do you do it? You know, we, I think the chief and I went into this with, with the noble idea of wanting to help people. And we're seeing less and less of that. And so I, um. We, we deal with it on a daily basis. Um, it's scary what we're seeing today. I can't even imagine what it's going to look like in the next ten, fifteen years. I, I really truly hope that the pendulum starts swinging back to. To what it used to be.
Yeah, I'll just add, it is, um, it's not just a central Marin problem. It's, it's not just a Marin. It's, uh, it's statewide. It's nationwide. Um, you can just Google it and find articles. Everyone across the nation is going kind of through the same thing. And it's not just law enforcement. It's the job market in general right now. Restaurants are having trouble staffing waiters and bus people. And then. Pretty much everyone's having trouble getting people to work right now. And then you kind of couple it with everything else law enforcement's gone through over the last couple of years. It just makes it a. Not a super desirable profession right now. So we're constantly adapting and trying to think outside the box. I will say. Even though we're having, we're struggling to, to fill our positions, just pretty much like everyone in Marin is. Um, the people that we are selecting are, are really respectful and I want to point that out because. I, I'll be a hundred percent honest and I won't speak for the captain, but I'm not sure I'd go into law enforcement if I was, you know. Um, a twenty six year old again right now in this day and age, but having, it was a lot, was a lot different when I started and I really respect everyone who's. Joining us now and I think they're going to be great additions for the future.
Thanks. And then just last question, setting aside the stats, what's the number one concern either you two have? I'll say going into two thousand and twenty two, crime wise, cybersecurity, anything, um, that you kind of see that maybe is out there? Or that worries you?
Um, I, I, I won't speak for the chief, um, but what. Concerns me right now is, is the lack of, um. Criminal prosecution and it's not just in Marin County. It's, it's all throughout the state and actually throughout the country. Um, that's, in my opinion, it's, it's emboldening. Criminal activity and you know, Marin is, is a special place. I grew up and I was raised in Marin County and I love it. But, um, no one's immune to, to crime. And so, um. I think we need to, I, I, I'm starting to see the pendulum swing a little bit. Um, we need to have. Uh, more community support. We need to have more criminal prosecution, um, and, and some consequences. I, 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 I read countless articles every week about crimes going unpunished. Um, and that's what emboldens people to commit crimes. If there's no consequences, why not? I, you know, what I think drives the chief and I is we want to make sure that the quality of life that people are enjoying. Um, the past five years and today is what's continuing to, for them to enjoy the next five, ten, fifteen years. Um, and the police can only enforce so much, right? I mean, we're just one component to a, a much larger social issue.
I think I, I would agree. I think the backend of the, the criminal justice system is a little worrisome for us because we're, we're basically the front end, right? We go out, we make an arrest and then we hand it off to the jail and to the prosecutor. And then even if they do their job a hundred percent, no, it's, it's a judge, it's sentencing and then it goes into the prison system. And then there's parole involved. There's probation down the road. And, um, if not, everything's firing in all cylinders. Um, sometimes people are just. Coming back to us a little quicker than they used to. We'll call it that. Um, it was a lot different when we started where you could kind of. You know, arrest someone who's been doing a bunch of things over and over and you know, you wouldn't be seeing them for a while. And now just. It only takes one cog for there to be a significant hiccup. And one of the biggest hiccups honestly was the pandemic with, um, jails.
Zero bail.
Zero barrel. Everyone don't, we'd be seeing people back out within fifteen minutes due to the pandemic. Prisons early released a lot of people. Um, it's just a different time. And I think that's really the most, the most worrisome for us is this, a newer generation. Doesn't really see any consequence and, uh, and that's a little scary going forward.
Thanks. I appreciate the honesty in your answers, by the way. I really appreciate that. Uh, with that, are there any other questions from town council members? No, with that, I'll go ahead and open up the public comment. And again, if you're here in person, just please, um, go to the podium. And other than that, um, I see two hands raised. Uh, via Zoom, one is Roy and then the other one is Pat Ravazio. So Rebecca, if you can bring Roy over first, please.
Thank you, Mayor Casilla. Yes, I will unmute Roy, but at the same time, I'm also going to try toggling between a different view to see if that helps get the timer on the screen. But if not, I do have the timer running on my laptop.
Thanks. Rebecca, would it help if I stopped sharing?
Yeah, I think that'd be a good idea.
So, but I think I'm going to try putting it briefly into gallery mode to see if that shares the timer.
And again, if you're zooming in, we appreciate the patience with this. Again, this is our first meeting using a hybrid model. Um, so we're just working through the technology. So I appreciate people's patience.
Oh, that is what it is. All right. Um, just a minute, please.
So, hey, Roy, just give us a minute or so.
Roy, are you able to speak?
Good evening, all.
I'm going to start the timer.
Hey, you got a big Roy Wolford up there. Uh, my compliments to Chief Norton and Captain Khalili. You're appreciated. The entire staff is appreciated. And appreciate your candid report tonight. Uh, Captain Norton, I mean, I'm sorry, Chief Norton, we spoke, uh, over a month ago. We had a real good conversation and, and one of the areas that, uh, I was. Looking for information on was thefts. And, and the number of thefts that were, uh, occurring and were they increasing? And I also asked a question about, do you respond to thefts and all, all thefts? And you said you responded to all thefts and I believe that. One of the concerns that I have, and I've, I've spoken with, uh, various businesses, is I think there is a lot of thefts not being reported. And I think. Speaking to, uh, not prosecuting crimes, uh, you know, it kind of, kind of gets to that. I, I would like the council members and Eli, I think you asked what you could do for the police department. Go around, work with the Chamber of Commerce, finding out, find out. How many thefts are going on and aren't being reported? And the reason they're not being reported? They don't get prosecuted and it takes a lot of time and money to follow through on a theft. In addition, the people and take, go over and talk to the manager at Safeway and see what happens. They get thefts coming in there all the time and then, then the thieves go outside and sell the product. So the good citizens are buying the stolen products. I mean, that's outrageous. Also, uh, there was a, a note on the tremendous increase in crimes against police. We see that not only in Marin, but all across the nation. Thank God we're not getting shootings at this time. But the whole defund the police crowd was all part of that psycho movement that was going on, uh, throughout the nation as well as Marin. And Eli, the thing you can do to get, it's a support for the police is talk to the DA and ask the DA to start prosecuting the crimes. That's what needs to be done. So I, I hope every member of the town council put together a letter, send it to DA, send it to our congresspeople. They put together legislation that makes it very difficult to prosecute small crimes in New York. They call it broken windows. And we see what's happening in New York on not enforcing broken windows, meaning small crimes, they're not being attended to and they need to be. There was also mentioned about organized crime. It's all kind of a breakdown of our civil society and I brought that up. Another item that came up, it was mentioned about equitable and I brought that up at a previous meeting. This whole diversity, equity and inclusion business, it might be well intended, but it's not stopping discrimination. What it's do, well, I, I won't get into that. That's another meeting. Don't have enough time to handle all of that. But I would hope that the council gets together and starts supporting the police, get rid of this defund the business, uh, defund the police business. There were people in the.
Your three minutes.
We're, we're asking the police to protect them.
Right, right, right. I apologize, but your three minutes are up. We appreciate your comments. And with that, can you bring over Pat, please, Rebecca?
Pat, are you able to unmute yourself and speak?
Hi there, everybody. Nice to see you back in, uh, official digs there. Um, I was just, uh, questioning, I was waiting to hear something that I thought I was going to hear and I didn't hear it. So. I'm wondering whether it's in more the granular parts of the report or, um, whether or not you could address the, um. Demographics of both the traffic stops and the arrests. There was a lot of discussion about racial disparities and why stops were more of. One race rather than the other. And if it breaks down Hispanic. Um, black, it would be great to know what's happening in our community in that regard. And then my other comment is, um. The report that you made about affordable housing and how that's one of the great deterrents to having really great police officers and all kinds of community workers. Um, in our town. Um, uh, we, workforce housing is something that's possible. The county's talking about doing it out at Larkspur Landing. And I think Corte Madera could do some designated Corte Madera workforce housing for police, first responders, teachers. If we get together and decide that's what we want to do. And I keep waiting for us to get together and decide that's what we want to do. And I hope that. This report will make the council members think again about who we should be providing housing for. So I would like to hear that, uh, first question answered or whether or not we're, whether or not we're breaking down that data. Um, would love to know the, the detail on it. Thanks very much.
Thanks, Pat. We're going to go through public comment first and then I'll bring it back to you, Chief, uh, for that question. Rebecca, do we have any emails that came in?
Thank you, Mayor Casilla. No, we did not receive any emailed, uh, public comments on this item.
Thanks. As we have no emails, there's nobody here in person that wishes to speak. Uh, we have no more hands raised. I'll go ahead and close public comment. And Chief, can either you two address, uh, demographics, uh, for us, please? Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. So, um, part of, uh, the reform movement and legislative changes was to institute. Uh, RIPA requirements, R I P A. And ours became effective, uh, January first. So effective January first. All of our traffic stops had to log and I'll let you clean this up when I'm done, Captain, because you know better than I do. About twenty different items, um, including race, uh, perceived gender, um. Perceived age, things like that. It's not just traffic stops. It's anytime we detain someone. So that can be. Um, uh, someone jaywalking, it could be a traffic stop. It could be we get called to one of the shopping centers and they ask, uh, you know, we end up having to trespass somebody. Those are all technically detentions and we have to log those and report them now. So, um, we just maybe about a week or two ago went live with our first quarter statistics for two thousand and twenty two. And, um, those can be found on our website. If you go Central Marin Police and you click on, I believe it's, uh. Reports is the first pull down and then they'll be right under this report, which will be going up in about a week on our website. There's a ripple link and you can go to that and see all that data. We'll be updating that, um, quarterly. So every three months we'll be adding to that. And then at the end of the year, we'll do a, a year compilation of it and then move on to the next year. But that, um, that information you were asking about can be found there.
Okay, with that, um, I'll go ahead and close out this part of our meeting presentation. I apologize. Todd, go ahead. Sorry. I didn't see in the distance.
Okay, no, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to, want to point out something about Central Marin Police Authority that has always been really amazing to me. So. Um, the town of Corte Madera and the city of Larkspur have done three community surveys, um, one in the late two thousands. Um, Larkspur just completed one in twenty twenty one, and I believe we completed one in twenty seventeen. And when they do the surveys. They look at services. They're focused on how is your town? How's your police? How is fire doing? And on all three of those surveys consistently going back to the late two thousands to present. Our police force is rated at an eighty five percent approval rating in our two communities, Corte Madera and Larkspur, which is really remarkable up and down the state. Uh, those that give the surveys will tell you that the average is closer to sixty percent. Um, because a lot, there's a lot of work to be done. And so two parts is I think our police force is doing a good job and they're being, uh, communicative and reactive to the community's needs. And I think it's important for our police officers to know that they are supported by our community. And so I'm really proud of our community, uh, for that support. And I just wanted to mention that for you.
Thanks. And with that, I'd like to thank the both of you, uh, both for your service and your presentation night. And also as a community, we're grateful, um, both to your officers and your entire staff, uh, for the service they provide, uh, to Corte Madera. Uh, it's greatly appreciated. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, member of the councils. Have a great night.
Thanks.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Uh, ju- just one thing to note, I noticed again, because we're new to the hyper thing. Uh, on town council side, when we're speaking, we just need to move the mics closer to us. Um, I don't know if they're sensitive or not, but we just need to move them a little bit closer. It's just something I noticed. Uh, with that, we'll go to our next presentation, which is the Marin wildfire, uh, prevention authority update to council. It's being provided by Mark Brown, who's the executive director. If I have this correct, Mark, I think you've spent thirty years. With Marin County Fire Department and you were appointed the executive director in two thousand and twenty.
That is correct.
Officer Ogo, thank you. I'll turn it over to you.
Uh, good evening, Mayor Casilla, uh, council members. It's a pleasure to be here tonight and let me start my. Screen share and I'll look for a, a thumbs up real quick if it's looking good.
You're good.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Um, so tonight we are going to talk, um, mostly about the Greater Ross Valley shaded fuel break, but I'll touch on a few things. Um, besides that, but, um, before I even leave this slide, I want to mention that. Um, the Greater Ross Valley shaded fuel break truly is the brainchild of Battalion Chief Todd Lando of the, um, Central Marin Fire Department. And you guys have. Um, such a talent with Todd and, and the rest of the Central Marin Fire Staff. And he had the foresight to not only envision this project, but also to plan in this current fiscal year. The scoping and environmental compliance. And that's going to allow us to go straight into work this next fiscal year. And then the rest of the four zones within the MWPA are looking at this as a model to follow. So you guys are really leading the way on this. And I wanted to, um, call out Todd for all the work that he's done with this. Um, I'm not going to read the mission statement to you, but what I do want to cover is how important all of the. how important all of the relationships that we have and our stakeholders that are listed on this slide. And this project really does cover every one of these. And that's starting with our land managers, because a good portion of the Greater Ross Valley Shaded Fuel Break will be in private lands, but it's also going to be in public lands. So we are working side by side with our public land managers for this work. And like I said, a lot of it is going to be on private lands. So, and so that's our Marin residents. So we're working hard on this project to make sure that the residents are well informed. We've already had one community meeting, and we are going to have a follow-up community meeting just before we start working around June or July. Again, they will have a piece of this work. Not all of the work will be done by the MWPA. We're going to be leaning on the residents to fulfill their responsibilities on their private property. And then we have civic leaders, both elected and appointed, but also the leaders within our communities. And so councils such as yours taking the lead and working with your fire department and with your public safety and your, your land management partners and public works to help create this, this fire adapted community that we're looking for. And obviously, we have our first responders. They, they don't only respond to fires nowadays, they are in the fire prevention business. And then we won't be able to do this without our business partners, mostly because much of the work is going to be conducted by private industry and private contractors. And then this talks about the MWPA's goals. But I would like to bring this into how this impacts the Greater Ross Valley Shaded Fuel Break, especially talking about what we call our systems approach. And this slide really describes our systems approach really well, because some of the comments we received, especially during our community meeting is, well, if the tubs fire can jump 101 in four lanes of freeway, what is a shaded fuel break going to do with our safety? And that's a very fair question. And so what we have to do though, is we have to look at a systems approach. And we need to use every component of our systems. I'm going to start actually with the middle portion of this slide, and that's reduced risk to homes. And the reason why I'm starting the middle slide is that our approach is what we call the house out approach. And so we're really looking at home hardening and decreasing ignitability of homes. Because as fires enter into the urban environment and become an urban conflagration, it's home ignition that's spreading the fires, not necessarily the vegetation. So we're looking at decreasing that home ignition through home hardening, also through de-space, defensible space, especially in zone zero, that's zero to five feet. And then throughout the rest of the property, we're looking at decreasing the ignitability. Part of the way we're doing that is through educating the public. And we're also doing that through grant programs, so that we can help those that who don't have the financial means to do the work, but also incentivize that work. Then I'm going to move back towards to improve evacuation systems. That's both evacuation route clearing, evacuation round hardening, where I've also been improving the evacuation systems that we have, so that we can get residents out safer. And then, as you can see, the highlighted section here, reduce wildfire fuels. That's where the Greater Ross Valley Shaded Fuel Break is. We will be reducing fuels right along the wildland urban interface boundary, as close to the homes as we can get. And in a little bit, I'll discuss how that, how that works, even though fire can jump something like the 101 freeway in Santa Rosa. And then we're also working with our land management partners to increase forest health. And by increasing forest health, that decreases the chance of large catastrophic fires started in our wildlands and developing just a tremendous amount of energy before they come into our communities. So some specifics about the shaded fuel break. Like I mentioned, it was one of 111 projects that were proposed for the 2122 work plan. And for 2122, it was all about scoping, and it was all about going through our environmental compliance, programmatic environmental impact report called the California Vegetation Treatment Program, or CAL VTP. And we are on track to finalize that in May or June. And so that will allow us to go to work in July or August. And again, this is an initial investment in this planning effort, and the CAL VTP's environmental process is comprehensive, but it includes all the years of initially establishing the fuel break. But once you establish a fuel break, it becomes infrastructure, and so that requires maintenance. And we have to make sure that we maintain it. And again, environmental compliance we are completing will cover that maintenance. And then let's talk about the success of a fuel break. And we, there really is, I think, a misunderstanding what success of a fuel break is. Many people think that a fuel break will simply stop a fire, and if it doesn't stop the fire, it's not successful. But that's not really the case. There's different definitions depending on the location of the fire, the intensity of the fire, the fire weather. And also, you know, we're really locked into looking at the 1% of the fires, and that is the mega fires. And I firmly believe that we need to focus on the 99% of the fires, the fires that we see 99% of the time. And we can have a three acre fire impact a home faster than we can get a fire engine there. And that's where this shaded fuel break is going to come into play. Shaded fuel breaks under those 99% circumstances either significantly decrease the rate of spread of that fire, or actually stop the spread of that fire. And so that's really what we're looking for in the 99%. But when we do get into the mega fires, the way shaded fuel breaks help us is that as the embers are falling in front of the main front of a fire, and they start landing in our shaded fuel break area, instead of landing in heavy fuel and becoming new and even intensive spot fires, they become in, they turn into low intensity creeping spot fires. And then as the main fire front approaches shaded fuel break, then the fire intensity, the rate of spread decreases. So it increases our chance to be able to get our time to be able to get residents out of the neighborhood. It gives them a safer, safer environment to get out of the neighborhood in. And it gives our firefighters a better chance of going in there and succeeding. I'm definitely not going to read every word of this line, of this slide for you, but it's just some of the examples of the work that's gone into it, and some of the requirements that we have to meet as far as documentation and process in order to meet the CAL VTP standards. And I see some of you zooming in with your eyes on this map. I will get into a map that's specific to Corte Madera here in a little bit. But you can see it's a 38 mile long fuel break that'll be going around the entire Ross Valley. Yeah, you'll see all the communities that it's going to support and, and help protect. And then you also see some of the public lands. And the CAL VTP process that we're going through will provide environmental compliance for the Marin County Open Space District. But the Marin Municipal Water District has already done this type of compliance work for their land. So any work that is done in support of the Greater Ross Valley Shaded Fuel Break will be already, will be covered in the compliance document that they've already prepared. So generally, the features of this, it'll be 200 feet wide. In some places, it'll be 300 feet. And how did, how did we come up with that? Well, we went through fire modeling with a company called Vibrant Planet, working with our environmental consultant Panorama, to actually look at the fuel types, the veget, the slope, the aspect to the sun, whether it was, you know, like a small canyon or a drainage or creek, and scientifically determining if we needed to have, what, what that width is. And most of it's going to be 200 feet, and in some places it could get up to 300 feet. And I think what's important to note is that most of this work is going to be done by hand. It's not going to be heavy equipment getting in there behind instructors, quite frankly, because some of it's, most of it's far too steep, and also the access to get the heavy equipment in there. So much of it's going to be fuel crew people on their feet with chainsaws or hand tools, getting this work done. And I think it's important to realize that a shaded fuel break is just that, we are not removing all of the fuel. We're removing the dead and down that's on the ground. We're removing the unhealthy trees, plants and shrubbery. And we're creating horizontal separation between the plants, but also vertical separation, so that as the fire is on the ground, it has less of a chance to spread horizontally. And just as importantly, if we remove that, we create that vertical separation, it's harder for the fire to crawl up into the canopies and become that high intensity fire. And here's that map I promised you for that specific Corte Madera zoomed in. And if you go to our project website, you actually can pull down the file that you can load into K, into Google Earth. And we have instructions on the website, so you can actually zoom in as much as you want into these. And you can see that it really does flow right along the wildland urban interface boundary. And it creates a very circuitous route. And you can see up here in Madrone Canyon where it dives back in. And, you know, it would have been really easy just to connect that little pocket there. But then it doesn't do us any good for that smaller fire that starts within that pocket and threatens those homes. So you can see that we really stuck with that community boundary concept. We used the, the data that was in our Community Wildfire Protection Plan as, in addition to increased our additional fire modeling to determine where and what size that shaded fuel break should be. And also, we were able to prioritize the segments, which is identified here in this map, for implementation. These are recommendations, not necessarily exactly how it's going to be laid out. In fact, I do know that you can see in Larkspur, Corte Madera, that they're actually seventh and eighth rated for priority. But I do know that there are plans to be actually getting some of the segments within seven and eight done in this next fiscal year of 22, 23. And it also brings about maintenance. And some of the grassy areas where we're going to be doing, doing a work through grazing, it'll be annual project. It'll be something that we have to do every year, because the grass grows back every year. When we start getting into the, the grassy oak woodland or the, the brush type fuel models, I, I would imagine that we'll be doing retreatments every three to five years. And then in the heavier timber areas where things grow a little bit slower, it'll, the retreatments will probably be between five and seven areas, years. But this is something that we'll constantly monitor, so that we can continue the safety of that shaded fuel break. And just some examples of what a shaded fuel break can do for us, both fire behaviorally, but also for the forest health. This is in the Citron Bowl, and on the left-hand side, most of that vegetation that you see is acacia. And we had a project that went in there. Again, Todd Lando was the spearhead for this project, and the acacia was removed. And you can see it in the foreground. You can also see it in the background. And if you look in the after picture in the foreground, you see oaks that are now being able to thrive, that were being drowned out by the acacia. And they, they weren't really going to be able to survive in that environment. And you also see on the right that a tree that has fallen, the crews decided to leave that tree, because that's creating habitat for the critters that are out in that area. So we're balancing the fire risk and the habitat that's required for our ecology. Top of Summit, excuse me, the top of Summit in Corte Madera, you can see again, we're not removing all the vegetation. We're removing the, the, the ground fuels and the horizontal, creating a horizontal and vertical separation. This is a great example. Behind the SUV, you see a lot of room that's sprouting in the, in the before picture. In the after picture, you see that broom has been removed. And you can see that if any embers land in the ground there, you're just going to creep, creep around on the, on the, in the ground fuels, rather than burning that broom and then get up into the canopy of the oaks. Another fantastic picture where you see the, the unhealthy, the smaller trees have been removed, the limbs that were actually probably sapping strength from the rest of the tree have been removed, and much of the ground litter has been thinned out. And, and finally, I like this picture, because in this before picture, you could see how an ember in an advancing wildfire could easily land and become another explosive spot fire and get up into the canopy of the trees on the left-hand side of the slide. But on the right-hand slide, side, you can see how it's much more likely that the amber will land in there, and it'll just be a low intensity fire. This, I'm definitely not going to go through this, but this is just showing you the, the check marks that we go through to go through our environmental compliance, again, called the Vegetation Treatment Plan, or CAL VTP. And then we are going to have a tremendous amount of private land ownership participation. That's why we've already had one community meeting. And that's why I have been reaching out to our board members and asking if I have, can have some time with our, our town and city councils. And then we will have a second meeting with our entire, at the community level again, as we start to do work on the project, so people can have an idea of where and when the work is going to be. Here's that rough draft of the schedule, and I'm very pleased with how fast we've been able to move through this. You can see that the modeling started September 1st. And by December, we've already have a pretty good plan in place. We have our draft of our vegetation management compliance done in January, and we're looking at finalizing that in May or June with work implementation in June or July. And again, five years for me, implementation of the entire project, and then we'll continue with the maintenance. I do want to touch on two other items within the MWPA that has a lot of interest. And one of them is the fact that some homeowners are being challenged with cancellations and non-renewals. And so we have been actively partnering with our insurance companies and working on means that if our residents are complying with the defensible space recommendations and/or the codes and statutes that are in, within the state, that we can get promises from the insurance companies to not non-renew or to cancel. Boulder, Colorado has a program called Wildfire Partners that we have been connected with that has established a similar program. And it does line up with the California Safer from Wildfire Framework that the Insurance Commission has, has been working with our insurance companies. And we've been meeting with large insurance companies one-on-one to create financial incentives to get the work done, because they realize that they want to continue to provide insurance in California. But they're going to have, they realize that in, in order to protect their investment, they're going to have to invest a little bit more and, and help the homeowners get to that level of protection around their homes. And then with the California Safer from Wildfire Network, the insurance companies were going to start putting some of contract inspectors from insurance companies evaluating the properties. We're trying to partner with them so that they can learn to trust the reports that we generate, and so that our residents will only have to go through one inspection with our folks, rather than having to go through an inspection with our folks, perhaps a reinspection, and then have the insurance company come in. And my last slide is the defensible spacing inspections are going to start tomorrow in the Corte Madera, Larkspur and Kentfield area. And you can see the schedule of where the inspections are going to be. And you can see that Christmas Tree Hill is the target area for Corte Madera this year. Last year, we hit East Corte Madera, Meadowsweet, Chapman Park, Hidden Valley and the upper Christmas Tree Hill. It was about 1,100 parcels last year. And due to the data that we've been gathering through our inspection portal, we're going to decrease the inspections, because we find that we are getting the greatest level of compliance when we re-inspect. And it's been an issue across the state. Some people have been fining people, giving them citations if they don't get their work done. Well, if you're asking them to do $2,000, $3,000 of work that they don't really want to do in the first place, and you give them a $300 citation, they're likely to pay the $300 citation rather than get the work done. We've all, but we've, and then there's the public education piece. And I really do feel that the combination of public education, partnering with insurance, and incentives in insurance is how we're going to get greater compliance. But again, our data is showing when we show up for a reinspection, that's when we get the compliance. And so Todd and his team of inspectors have decided that they're going to ramp up the number of reinspections to help increase that compliance. And with that, I'll stop my screen share and then be open for any questions from the council.
Thanks, Mark. Hey, real quick, if you don't mind, because you mentioned Todd Lando a few times. He is actually on the call. Are you okay if we just bring him over? It has a panelist really quick. Introduction. Just give Rebecca a minute or so.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll bring it back to council for questions. I figured while he's on, like to connect the name to the face.
Todd Lando will be joining us briefly.
I said name with face, there's no face, but go ahead. There he is. You just want to do a brief introduction, Mark, that'd be great.
Yeah, well, Todd, Todd and I go way back in our fire service careers, both, I think, started County Fire in 1991. And he, he and I have worked in a lot of different aspects together. And now you guys have the pleasure of having him as your wildland mitigation specialist battalion chief. So Todd?
Thanks for the introduction, and thanks for giving them the, the current breakdown on the status of these projects.
the current breakdown on the status of these projects. You know, it's been like, like Mark said, we've worked together for a long time. It's a real pleasure to work with them in its new role. And and this organization has just been critical to what I think is going to be our future success in mitigating or reducing the impact of wildfires. I want to thank the council, the town staff and and town manager for all the support you've given in this this organization and my new role. And and I think without your support, these projects wouldn't be where they are right now. Like Mark said, I think we're we're in a unique position that the town of Corne Madara, City of Larkspur are way ahead of, you know, some comparable sized agencies in Marin and certainly in the rest of the state on on moving forward on mitigating these issues.
Thanks. And we'll leave you on as panelists in case there's any questions that you may be able to answer. You're okay with that?
Absolutely. Thanks.
With that, let's bring it back to council for questions. Bob, go ahead.
Mark, hi, I don't want to put you on the spot here, but in one of our board meetings, when we were talking about the fuel break, one of the things you talked about, I thought that was really compelling. I'd like you to share with everybody here is you talked about three fires last fall that were all stopped by fuel breaks. Because a lot of people go, oh, fuel breaks, is that really going to stop a fire? And it did. Can you talk about those a little bit? Because I think that's really compelling information.
You you bet. There's two local fires. Well, actually, last year, one of them was on Santa Fel Hill. And it was a nighttime fire. So we that's one of the challenges with nighttime fires is we have no aircraft to support our firefighting efforts. And I like there's to me, there's twofold benefits for that fire. Not only did the work decreased the fire severity and 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 the ridge held that fire by itself because of the work that had been put in. But the residents knew that that work had been done. And they knew that it was going to be a low intensity fire because of that work. And the level of confidence and the lack of panic in that community, I think, was very important that night. And then one of the more remarkable ones was on a red flag day where there were very strong winds blowing. A fire that started on the Terreland Divide between Lucas Valley Road and Sleepy Hollow. The fire ignited under the heaviest wind conditions. The fire burned up towards a grazing project and a fire road. And remarkably, that fire road, mid-slope fire road, not on a ridge, held under strong red flag conditions. And I don't know if I've ever seen a red mid-slope fire road hold a fire under red flag conditions without suppression efforts. And then I think I I want to bring up the Cowdor Fire in two different places. Pollock Pines had a shaded fuel break that proved to be very important in Pollock Pine surviving the Cowdor Fire. It took significant suppression effort for that to happen. However, without that shaded fuel break, the suppression efforts would not have been successful. And then as the Cowdor Fire went down into the Tahoe Basin, the incident commander for the the Forest Services and Management Team that was managing that portion of the fire said they went from one hundred and fifty foot flame lengths to fifteen foot flame lengths when it hit the treated areas.
Thank you. And Todd, a quick one for you. This is basically what you guys have been doing up on Lower Summit Fire Road for the past year, right? It's basically what we're talking about here only on a thirty-eight mile long stretch.
Yeah, very similar. You know, we speak about the the work we do in terms of treatment. What are we doing to the vegetation, changing the the shape and the volume of the vegetation? And so the work we did along that fire road was to help improve our safety. If fire engines need to access Christmas Tree Hill while residents are evacuating on the pavement, it'll do the same thing that we're looking to do with the shaded fuel break. It'll reduce the amount of heat that strikes the road, make it safer for firefighters to travel along that road, stop if they have to, and and in certain cases, potentially stop a fire from crossing that road or give us the ability to fight the fire from the road that we wouldn't have otherwise.
Yes, thank you. I walk up there regularly and it's been a remarkable amount of brush has been removed. It's really incredible. So thank you. That was it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Eva.
Thanks for your presentation. That was really fascinating and I'm really impressed with the work you're doing and we appreciate it. I just had a question, a couple of quick questions. One, I'm sure this is an impossible question to answer, but I wondered if you had any thoughts about what you're expecting this fire season, given the rains we've had and what just how you think things may shape out. And then the second question is just if someone, you know, if a resident is watching this and wants to get moving on hardening their home, is there a website or something we could direct them to to learn about the recommendations and the possible grants and cost sharing things that you mentioned?
I get if you don't mind, I'll answer your questions in reverse order and I'll take the what residents can do to engage. And I love that question because in order for us to be successful, we're going to need our residents to fully engage. FiresafeMarin.org is probably the premier website throughout the state, if not nation, for information on how to home harden provide to get defensible space and be ready for evacuations. In fact, I know other areas of the state that tell their residents to look at firesafeMarin.org. They also can reach out to the Central Marin Fire, ask any questions. And we strongly encourage when inspectors show up, be be present and ask questions to the defensible space inspectors because I think our best form of public education occurs during those inspections. When they get their report, they will their inspection report, they will have numerous links to follow for the information surrounding the home hardening and the defensible space. Also, any grant programs will be available to them will be available through that report. And then the fire season. I I hate to say we are going to have the worst fire season ever. My my usual comment is that California gets into the position to burn every year regardless of what the winter is like. And it really depends on the the weather that we have during the summer and the ignitions that we have during the summer. However, we are in unprecedented fuel conditions. The the two droughts back to back with hardly a drought saver year in between. We had what could feel like drought busting rain in October and December. And for maybe our reservoirs in Marin, that did a lot of good. But when you start thinking about the aquifers and the groundwater that's keeping the vegetation that's growing healthy, that ground can only soak it up so fast. It ran off before it really could soak in. And that also is the same with the fuels that are on the ground that have been drying for seven years now. They have been having below normal precipitation. And when we have all that rain at once, it can't absorb it that fast. And so when we got all that rain, it only absorbed so much of it. And then January and February being so dry, every benefit that we got out of October and December went away. And we are already at historically low fuel moisture levels. And that's of the type of fuel that we're monitoring. That's what is the driver for these extreme fires. So I I'm loving the rain that we have been seeing. But I think it's going to be just a minor slight uptick in the fuel moistures that will disappear quickly. So I really think we're if we had the ignitions in the summertime weather, I think we could have a very similar fire season as twenty twenty-one.
Sorry, Mark, since we're talking about you were talking about home hardening. One of the other things you did in your video on the fire in Santa Rosa, you talked about the houses that had burned and how several so many of them burned from the top down. Did you talk about that a little bit and the importance of home hardening and how we can solve that? Thanks.
I love that observation.
You didn't know this.
So vents, vents and more vents is what I'll say about that. And that's the vents in your attic eaves and the vents in at your for your subfloor. As these wind-driven fires are coming into communities and getting houses to ignite and more embers are coming off those houses, the wind will blow those embers up against the house and they either fall. And if they land in vegetation up that's up against the house, that vegetation ignites, starts burning. Or just as often, the embers hit the house and because they're hot and there's convection, they go up and go into your attic vents. And they enter into your attic where you have kiln-dried wood. And every house in my neighborhood that burned down in the glass fire was from the attic down. So the for me, the number one home hardening thing that needs to happen is you know, improving your vents, whether they're Vulcan vents or eighth inch mesh vents. And then also cleaning your gutters so the embers landing in your gutters or valleys of your roof aren't igniting.
All right, Eli, go ahead and then we'll go to you, Charles, after.
Great. Thank you, Fred. Thank you, Mark, and thank you, Todd. Amazing presentation. And also thank you, Bob, because I know you've done really good work on this board. You know, fantastic work with the shaded fuel break in that project. Honestly, like stretches my idea of like what types of projects are possible. It's just amazing. Just two quick questions. One, I saw in the presentation, it looks like there's no, there's not going to be any shaded fuel break work on MMWD land. Is that correct?
We did. We did not perform the environmental compliance for work done on MMWD land, but that that does not mean there won't be work. We just didn't do the environmental compliance because that environmental compliance already exists. So we'll be working with Marin Municipal Water District and encouraging them to do the work that supports the shaded fuel break.
Great, thank you. And then just one other small question on herbicides, because I saw that that might be a strategy that you guys might employ. Don't some of these jurisdictions and possibly the county itself have bans on herbicides? And if so, how does that come into play?
We will absolutely follow the ordinances and and laws within each of the jurisdictions. So if herbicides are banned in that particular jurisdiction, we won't use them. If they are allowable, then we will be following the integrated pest management plan of that jurisdiction.
Fantastic. Thanks again.
Charles, go ahead. I I think you're muted. Oh. It may be a there you go.
Yeah, hi, Mark, Todd. Thank you very much for the presentation. There was one little caveat that I thought was a really nice part of what you're doing with these fuel breaks, which was the elimination of invasive species, which I think exacerbate fire danger in a lot of situations, but I think also just kind of returning back to the natural landscape because I think removing vegetation, you know, clearing for like thinning out forests is usually traditionally been seen as kind of detrimental to the environment, right? In a kind of preservationist attitude. And I guess what I like to hear is that it's actually kind of bringing it back to a more natural and and state that's native to the way California has traditionally operated. And I didn't know if you'd, when you had these kind of studies done, if you looked at, if you're removing certain kinds of non-native species, but you want to create more shade break in the future and that type of thing, are you also planting new natives in certain areas to create fire resistance? Or are you just kind of leaving it more barren? Because I I think that's a great program and I'd like to see it enhanced even more, but.
I it will be a little bit of a blend of both. In some areas, we've noticed the removal of the non-native invasives have allowed the natives to thrive and they return on their own. And some of our other projects, we are planting some of the native species back in. So it'll be a little bit of a blend. And I can't tell you, I don't have the details, but yes, we're absolutely trying to support. And it's a combination of restoration and fire prevention coming together.
Thanks. Any other questions? No? Okay. With that, let me go ahead and open up for public comment. Is there anybody from the public in person wishing to speak? If you've zoomed in, please raise your hand. And then Rebecca, can you check the emails? Sorry if I sound repetitive on all this.
Thank you, Merica Cisa. I am not seeing any attendees in person wishing to provide public comment. Did not receive any emailed public comments on this item and I am checking the attendee list and I do not currently see any raised hands.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'll go ahead and close public comment. I want to thank the both of you. Again, great work. It seems like it's almost like cutting edge and you're setting the trend for other communities throughout California and maybe even the United States. So I just think you're doing great work. And just a quick reminder that next Tuesday, five thirty, both Chief Martin and also Mark will be on the mirrors forum. That's an open discussion. And Todd, if you have the time and you're available, I'd like to invite you. I'll call the you three the trio of fire. So we appreciate if you could attend also. It'd be great.
Absolutely. Thanks for the invite.
And great presentation. Thanks for your time.
It was our pleasure to be here. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Take care, everyone.
Okay. And with that, we're going to go ahead and move to the consent calendar. These are items are routine or normal. They've been previously discussed. They do not require further discussion. Anyone from the town council, staff or publicly request that I am be removed for further discussion. So at with that, at this point in time, is there anybody from the town council? And I have to look at Staffway over there, staff or the public either in person, email or online wishing to pull a item from the consent calendar. Okay, I don't believe we got any emails in.
No, Merica Cisa, we did not receive any emailed public comments on.
Thank you. We have no hands raised and nobody from the public wishes to pull a comment, nobody from town council. So I'll bring it back to close that part, but public comment out. Bring it back to town council. We're looking for a motion to approve items four A through four E. So moved. Thank you. Yeah, first.
Second.
Thank you. I've got no further discussion. Go and call for the vote.
Councilmember Beckman.
Yes.
Councilmember Mongan. Yes. Councilmember Avasio.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lee.
Yes.
And Merica Cisa.
Yes. With that, we'll go ahead and move to public hearings. Five A, this is a two-parter, if I understand this correctly. We have a public hearing for consideration and possible approval of the Corne Madara Town Council requiring a lot line adjustment, pre-zoning, general plan amendment. And and that we're looking for a motion for approval. And we also have the introduction of first reading of ordinance and then the zoning map. I'm just going to say it's related to eight hundred Corne Madara Avenue and not read all the numbers. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to staff.
Thank you, Mayor Casis, and members of the town council, Phil Boyle, your senior planner. I'm going to hand this over to Sean Kennings, who's a contract planner who's been working on this project for us. And he will be joining us from his home. So we'll see how that works and sharing a screen as well.
Actually, can I take a moment and just ask in the council chambers? Since we're we're just experimenting, do you prefer speaker view or gallery view when we're out of presentation? Do you want to see all the screens of remote participants on the the screen?
If everybody just give us a minute again, we're dealing with the technology. Go ahead, Phil. Thanks.
Sean, we're seeing your screen, but we can't hear you.
Oh, I haven't said anything. I was waiting for you guys.
All right, there you are. Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, thanks. This is working. Mayor Casis, a member of the council, I'm Sean Kennings with LAK Associates. Tonight before you is the eight hundred Corne Madara Avenue. It is a approval of a lot line adjustment, a pre-zoning and zoning map amendment and a general plan and sequo exemption all relation to an annexation of a encroachment area, a historical encroachment area from the eight hundred Corne Madara Avenue property into a Marin County open space property. So tonight we'll be presenting the application for law and adjustment pre-zoning for the encroachment area. Public and the town council to receive information related to the proposed project. And then provide your determination on the draft ordinance, the first reading, the pre-zoning and the zoning map amendment. And then the resolution for the lot line adjustment, general plan amendment and sequo exemption. I'll just go really quickly through the presentation. Then I do believe that members of the project team, Scott Hawks roster and the attorney for the project are here to provide additional information and answer your questions. So really quickly, project and the property is at the top of Corne Madara Avenue, eight hundred Corne Madara Avenue. It's a large property, ten point eight five acres. The encroachment area, as you can see in this little exhibit, is about twenty-one thousand square feet. Historical encroachment, this happened years ago, over over twenty years ago, maybe thirty years ago into the Marin County Open Space District area. The eight hundred Corne Madara is a open residential general plan and an R one C open residential zoning district. And the area that's encroaching to is open space space and open area. As part of this action, that encroachment area will be combined with the 800 Quarter Madera Avenue property and the town boundary zoning map and general plan map will all be amended. A little bit of background. Again, the previous owner years ago built a basketball court retaining walls and some landscaping improvements on the encroachment area. On the 14.2 acre in county open space district property located in the city of Mill Valley. The encroachment area is fenced and only accessible through the 800 Quarter Madera Avenue property. But in 2019, the Marin County Open Space District entered into a transfer agreement with the owner of 800 Quarter Madera Avenue to sell that portion of the property to the private owner. And they sold it for a market rate determination of the property, in addition to a payment of $250,000 for restoration to the open space district. Subsequently, the district submitted an application for the boundary adjustment called a reorganization and/or an annexation with the Marin Local Agency Formation Commission, LAFCO. That process occurred last fall. LAFCO approved the annexation at their February, but it is incumbent on the town of Quarter Madera to process this through the zoning and general plan and sequo. Once those actions are complete, effectively after the second reading of the ordinance, then LAFCO can finalize annexation, reorganization. And then the, the area, we officially transferred over to the town of Quarter Madera. The city of Mill Valley is already approved the transfer agreement in December of 2021. So this is the last little phase. So again, this is the application for the reorganization. It's primarily an adjustment application to the town. The pre-zoning is the town's action to designate that encroachment area as the R1C. The zoning map is subsequent to the pre-zoning, to make the maps official, to make the zoning district official. That happens by ordinance. Following that, the general plan map needs to be adjusted, the town boundary to create the vertical consistency with the zoning. And then lastly, there's a sequo exemption for existing facilities, section 15301, effectively because there is no physical action, there is no physical project associated with this. So there would be no environmental impacts. Really quickly, here is encroachment area. As you see, it's for landscaping, retaining walls, the basketball court, and some fencing. And then finally, the town boundary zoning map will be amended to reflect the new zoning. Similarly, the general plan designation will be amended to reflect the new district. Once the final annexation is approved and the final ordinance is read, staff can amend the, the maps through administrative process. It doesn't need to come back to the commission or the council. We did have a planning commission hearing in March where it was unanimously approved. So here it is today. You have the options. Introduce the first reading of the ordinance for the pre-zoning and zoning map. And adopt the resolution 262022, improve the adjustment, general plan amendment and sequo exemption. You can vote to revise the ordinance and the resolution, or you can request staff to respond to questions or comments. That's the gist of my presentation. I can answer questions if you have any.
Thanks for that. Phil, did you have anything else to add to that?
No, Sean did a great job. Completed everything we need. And Mr. Hodel, who's representing the project applicant is here. If you have any questions of him, I don't think he has a particular presentation. And that concludes staff's report.
Okay, thanks for that. I'll go ahead and bring you back to town council for any questions. Anybody have any questions? No? Okay. With that, I will go ahead and open up for public comment. Again, it's either in person via email or via those online. Sorry Rebecca, do we get any emails in?
We did not receive any emailed public comments, but I am seeing two raised hands.
Thank you. With that, can you bring over David McPherson? Then we'll follow him with Pat. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes. David McPherson, are you able to unmute yourself?
Yes, I am. Good evening. For 28 years, we have been neighbors of 800 Quarter Madera Avenue. And we sort of know the whole history of the property and we spent time on the trails behind it. And we simply want to say that we support the lot line adjustment. It makes sense. Thank you.
Thanks, David. If you can bring over Pat, please.
Hello, Pat, are you able to unmute yourself?
I am. Thank you. I just have a question about the precedent here. And I want to make sure that we have explored opportunities to make it clear that this kind of land grabbing by wealthy property owners is really not okay. And the people who did this knew what they were doing and apparently didn't get permits, I guess, for all that work they did, even though, you know, we little guys got to get permits when we build a little garden wall even. So I just want to find out, you know, what are we doing to make sure that people know that this is not okay? And did we, were we able to extract some fines or get some support? I mean, if they can build those big, beautiful public or the private facilities, let's use some of the penalty funds to build something for the public. I just think it's kind of outrageous that white privilege has gone this far in Marin. I didn't mean to say white privilege, but that the, the idea that a property owner can just go grab that open space and build on it and, and then it all gets forgiven and we go to provide them with zoning changes and everything to accommodate them. It seems a little absurd to me. Thank you.
Thanks, Pat. With that, I don't see any more hands raised. I believe we did not get any email comments in. I'm sorry. We have one more person in public.
I'm not entirely sure that mic is on yet.
Thank you, Phil. Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. I just wanted to respond to that last council, that last comment briefly by explaining what the transfer agreement with the district provides for. And first of all, this is an old encroachment that goes back at least three property owners before the current property owner. So it's been there for.
Could you introduce yourself?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. Rob Hodel, I'm a counsel for the applicant for this project. And from Cobbleton Patch Duffy and Bass. And this goes back, you know, two to three decades, this encroachment, several property owners ago. And when it was discovered, the, the district and came to the property owners and they worked out and negotiated over time a transfer agreement. So they're the, under this agreement, the property owner is paying fair market value for the 20,000 plus square foot area, but it's also making a $250,000 restoration payment, which is used for, to be used by the district for habitat restoration and the open space ball that's adjacent to the property as well as fire field reduction. So that was, you know, you can think of that as a penalty or another way of, of increasing the public good in, in order to, to make amends for the, for the old longstanding encroachment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry, Amy, go ahead.
In addition, the land transfer is really governed by LAFCO, the local agency formation commission. And when this land comes back to Quarter Madera, Quarter Madera will get the property tax value of the portion of land that's now being incorporated into Quarter Madera. So the town will receive the revenue from that land.
I think that's an important point because again, as it was mentioned in this meeting, this happened multiple owners ago, you know, decades ago. And it's, it's technically in the open space jurisdiction, but within the Mill Valley borders. But if anything happened in this specific area of that basketball court, it's always been in the sphere of influence for the town of Quarter Madera, our fire department, our police department, all of our resources would respond to that area. So this makes sense for us to incorporate it.
Thank you for that. With that, I see no hands raised, nobody else from the public wishing to speak. And I assume that we didn't get any emails in. Thank you. I'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to town council. And if I have this correct, on the first part of this, this is just the first reading of the ordinance, correct? So that we don't need to take action on. Then the second part is we are looking for a motion to approve resolution 26/2022. Go ahead, Eli.
Yeah, I'll move to approve resolution 262022.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Go ahead and call for the vote.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mongan?
Yes.
Councilmember Ovazia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Yes.
And Mayor Casissa?
Yes. And with that, we'll move to five B. This is first reading, possible introduction of an ordinance amending Quarter Madera Municipal Code. I'm not going to go through all this. It is regarding campaign contribution limits and also some cleanup, I think, of verbiage from the previous ordinance. So with that, if I have this correct, again, we don't need to take any action on this tonight because it's the first reading. With that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to staff for their report.
Thank you, Mayor Casissa and council members. Yes, that is correct. This is, this item is brought before you to consider first reading and possible introduction of the ordinance per the conversation that we brought to council at the March 15th council meeting. Where council was supportive of creating a new chapter that would be called Campaign Finance Reform and Campaign Contribution Limits for Municipal Elections, which would establish campaign contribution limits of $500 per individual contributor per election and establish a process for enforcing those limits. And under that section, as our subject matter expert, Planning Commissioner Phyllis Metcalf discussed, 113 cities in California currently have ordinances setting contribution limits per donor for candidates. In Marin County, only Sausalito and Nevada have set limits, but other cities of similar size tend to have limits in the 400 to $550 range. So it, it seemed like a comparable amount in, in our case would be sufficient. If, if the town does not have an ordinance in place, that would, would set the, the required campaign contribution limits per individual contributor per election, then the default would be under the state law, $4,900 per individual contributor per election. The ordinance as presented in attachment one lists the process for enforcing those limits as falling under the town's administrative citation code. You know, if you'd like to go into that section in greater detail. But to summarize the, the other section, existing section 2.42.010, that section governs the voluntary expenditure limit. And councils wishes at the, the March 15th meeting were to continue the process currently in place, which is a mathematical equation where you multiply the, the, the population of the town by 50 cents to get a number for that election for that year. And the town clerk would need to check the, the State Department of Finance's website annually to see what it lists as the current population, because that is what is in the ordinance as the governing number to derive the population. So under that ordinance, the town clerk would make the calculation and have it available to the public and on the website before each election season. The only change to that section was to repeal reference to an obsolete state law. And then the clerical changes for that section and section 2.42.020 are noted in red in the draft ordinance. And that's basically to change the, the lettering system slightly. Don't know if there's anything in greater detail you'd like to discuss for this, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Let me open it up for questions. Are there any questions from any town council members?
Thanks. I just had a quick question. I know the last time this came up, a number of us expressed concerns about just burden on staff for the enforcement. And I just wanted to confirm that staff's opinion that it would be pretty minimal remains true at this point.
I think the easy answer is that I don't believe it would be burdensome to staff. Of course, things can, can change during an election season once it's in process. But Phyllis Metcalf did volunteer her services to help sit with me. And when the filing period opens this summer and then closes, we will hold a meeting with the applicants or the candidates that have filed and we'll meet with them and discuss these, these rules in detail and help everyone get off on the right foot with it.
Any other questions from council members? No? Okay, this time I'll go ahead and open it for the public. Again, anybody from public, either present, either has a participant online or via email. Do we get any emails in?
There were no emailed public comments received on this item, although I am now seeing a raised hand from an attendee.
Thank you. If you can bring over David, please, McPherson.
Thank you. I will have a checklist to help this process, but right now I just have a lot of.
We'll get into a.
It'll get better. Oh, and there will be a TV screen in front of you. It is coming. David McPherson, are you able to unmute yourself?
I am. Good evening again. So recently, I participated in Tiburon Town Council election. And I saw numbers that creeped up into the 20, 30,000, $40,000 range. And I just thought, Quarter Madera, if you all believe that it makes sense, that, you know, $500 makes sense. I mean, I just don't want to see a wealthy candidate or someone with a tremendous amount of financial backing be able to raise, you know, that kind of money, 30, 40, $50,000 to run. So I'm in favor of having a cap at $500 or whatever amount seems appropriate. Thank you.
Thanks, David. Appreciate those comments. And with that, I don't see anybody from public wishing to speak. I don't see any more hands raised and we didn't get any emails in.
No, Mayor Casissa, we did not receive any additional emailed public comments.
Thank you. So with that, I'll go ahead and put a comment, bring it back to town council. And Amy, again, we don't need a motion on this, correct? To introduce it?
Actually, that's correct.
Okay. Okay. So we are looking for a motion to introduce the ordinance.
And then if it is introduced by the council at this meeting, it would be, it'll be a second meeting at which it could be adopted.
Okay, thank you. So let's do, let's do this one first, then we'll go back. So is there any other discussion where somebody like to make the motion? Go ahead and introduce the ordinance.
I will. Yes, just, we're a small town and this is absolutely in keeping with the spirit of the small town. I think we should absolutely do this. So I moved to introduce the ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Go ahead and call for the vote.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mongan?
Yes.
Councilmember Ovazia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Yes.
And Mayor Casissa?
Yes. And with that, we're going to go back to five A for a minute. We're going to have to do the same thing on the second part of this. Because we, we're looking for a motion to introduce the ordinance that's going to amend the zoning map for, basically related to 800 Quarter Madera Avenue. It's a second part under five A. So would somebody like to make a motion? So moved. Thank you. Is there a second?
Do we have an ordinance number? I don't have one in my packet.
Actually, we will have an ordinance number brought back at the next meeting.
Okay, sounds good. Then second.
It's ready for the discussion. Go ahead and call for the vote. Go ahead and call for the vote.
Was introduced by a councilmember Ravazia and seconded. Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mongan?
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Yes.
And Mayor Casissa?
Yes, so without, we have no business items. We'll go to council reports. Todd, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just a few updates. The first, I did forward it to the council, but I just wanted to, I'm just really proud of it. You know, Phyllis Metcalf did submit a letter to the editor in the Marin IJ. It was published, I believe, two days ago and really giving credit to Adam Wolf and, and the planning team. You know, really for the processes, the housing element, leading by example. And I just, it just reminds me of, you know, you see the police chief and the captain leading by example. We're safer with our, with our fire team, Todd Lando and, and Chief Martin and our planning team, just again, leading by example and, and really engaging the community and all the stakeholders at the front of the process. And, and so I'm just really proud of it. And also at the town attorney's office with Ann and Amy, all the great work, just sitting on the sideline, watching them, the thoughtfulness before the process even started, how much there is to, to this. I'm just doing it the right way. I'm just really proud of the team. And I appreciate Phyllis and the IJ recognizing the team for that. A few things we've been working on as we bring back our park and rec programs. Staff is, is following the direction of the council to really focus on those areas of need, you know, those that need grants to, to participate in programs. And so as we build up our programs, we've kind of reached out to our partners. So on the senior program side, all the great work of Patty Stolier and Carla Condon with H Friendly, the speaker series, we've donated ten thousand dollars to them to continue their great work. We've partnered, you know, the swim programs have been a big deal. Pat Ravazia last year started this process, bringing it to the Larkspur and quarter Madera, quarter Madera's attention to provide grants for those that don't have access to swimming lessons in the swimming pools. So we partner with Marin Pirates Foundation and Redwood High School and College of Marin. And so now there'll be Monday through Thursday over the summer. We will have three hour windows to provide swim lessons to those that normally wouldn't have access to it, as well as weekends on Saturdays, Sundays. And so we're looking at eighteen thousand dollars worth of grants to families in need. And so we've, we're gonna, we're committed to that and we're gonna join that partnership with both Redwood High School and the Marin Pirates Foundation. The other one is the Larkspur Quarter Madera School District came to staff recently. We have approximately thirty, I think, families. Is that about right, Rebecca? Okay, so possibly up to forty families that need assistance for after school programs. And so they've asked us to assist those quarter Madera families if possible, up to thirty thousand dollars. So staff, we're looking at the American Rescue Act monies. We're going to bring something to council as an update, but we, we do have the funding to support them. And so we're going to do that as well. So again, I'm, I'm really happy with staff and proud of them. Again, eighteen thousand dollars to, for swim programs, thirty thousand dollars to help those families in need of after school programs and ten thousand dollars to the seniors. And so a lot of good work going on there. RJ and his team, the council approved a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar sidewalk grant program. And so Mariner Cove is the first neighborhood to ask us to, to ask us to participate in that program. We just got, received our bids and it looks like it's under budget. So we originally budgeted two hundred and fifteen, two hundred and fifty thousand. It came in at about a hundred and eighty three thousand. So that's great. We're going to start that work immediately. And we have, you know, extra funds for this year. So we're going to try to get another neighborhood on the side of the fiscal year. It's, it's just, it looks like it's going to be really popular. So we'll come back to you on this budget process and just roll, ask for another two hundred and fifty thousand and keep it going. And again, what are, one of the other great things RJ and his team did, we've done an analysis and we broke the city, the town down into five quadrants. And we've evaluated all of our sidewalks. So we kind of have a priority area of need as we move forward. And so great work there. The last thing is the council has on the dais and we also have it for citizens in the council chambers. Those are zip jewels. And so we're really gonna, we're gonna get out there and bring some quarter Madera pride and try to engage our community and really tie it into our communications plan. So there's a barcode on those zip jewels. And so it has the insignia of the town of quarter Madera, the fire department and the police department. And we want to give those out. So when you're out there, council members, please give those out to the members of the community. Right now, that barcode goes to our websites, the three websites. But as we go, we'll start to do a communications campaign. So whatever's going on in our community, we can specialize it to that. We also are going to use those zip jewels on the Fourth of July and look at, identify something where we can engage public, private partnerships and give back to those in need in our community. And so we're, we're really excited what that stands for and what, what we could possibly do. Historically, that's been used for grant programs through retired athletes. We're the first town in the state of California to kind of use this process. And again, I'm following the lead of the council. We're excited to lead by example and get out there and help those that need assistance. And that's all I have.
Thank you. I'll bring it back to, any questions for Todd? No? Okay, I'll go ahead and bring it back to council for their reports. Bob? Thank you. Leva?
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Eli? Two quick things. CMSA, Central Insanitation Agency is in the middle of renegotiating their labor contracts. So I had the privilege of spending four hours on that while I was on vacation last week, but all seems to be going in a good direction. And then just another reminder for folks, the League of California Cities North Bay Division is having their division meeting in Vallejo next week, Wednesday, the twenty seventh. I think it's at eleven AM. I've got the information. I think I forwarded it to Rebecca. So we can get it to any council members who are interested and might want to attend, especially perhaps new council members who have not yet had a chance to meet their cohorts in other cities. So it could be fun. That is all.
Thanks, Eli. And for me, I just had to, I attended the countywide priority setting committee. It was my first time there. Basically, what that does is that there's certain grants that cities and towns throughout Marin may apply for through HUD. It has to go to the board of supervisors for approval. So this committee makes those recommendations, recommendations to the board. And then I also attended H Friendly Quarter Madera. And then just a reminder on that, September eighteenth is when we're going to be honoring our ninety, nineties and above, which I think there's about twenty six so far. And the other thing H Friendly Quarter Madera is doing also is that they're coordinating with the Red Cross and also Quarter Madera Rec for providing smoke alarms to our seniors, free, no charge. So that's out there also. And that's all I had. And with that, we have the draft agenda for the next meeting. If anybody has any changes to that or wants to add anything, go ahead, Eli.
Just one question for the public hearing declaring an area a high fire hazard zone. Have those folks been like noticed and the nearby folks? And or should they be? I would imagine this could be, you know, something that they might want to.
Yes, they will. And we'll also provide a map to the community. They hit a mass mailers because it'll affect a lot.
Great, thank you.
Thanks. And right before we adjourn, I just want to thank Rebecca. This is our first high thread. I thought it went really, really well. So total kudos to you. There's no major hitches and I just, it went really well. So thank you. So with that, we are adjourned.